We'll right into 10. Item number 10A is something we've been looking forward to for a very, very long time. Select a development team and authorize the city manager to enter into an exclusive negotiating rights agreement and commence negotiations of a disposition and development agreement for the Crossings Hotel. I'll give it to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It is indeed a very great pleasure tonight to be in the position to recommend, to bring you this report and to recommend the next important step in, towards the city and our community realizing the vision we have long held for the development of a high-quality hotel to complete the build-out of the Crossing San Bruno specific site area. Our report tonight will cover a number of important topics and will include three separate speakers. Myself, I would give you an overview of a number of important topics related to the action item that we're proposing for your consideration tonight. Jason Moody to my right will give, who is with Economic Planning Systems, a consultant to the city who has done extensive economic analysis of various, many hotel proposals that we have evaluated over the course of the last couple of years. And thirdly, representatives from OTO Development are in the audience tonight and we would like to give them an opportunity to present to you and to the public themselves, their firm, and the vision that they have to proceed further with us towards the development of a hotel. As we will discuss in further detail through the presentations tonight, the action that's proposed tonight is a next important step towards realizing the vision that the City Council and the community have long held, for over a decade in fact, for build-out of the Crossing site and the specific plan. This is by far not the last step in this process, but it is in fact a very important next step. In some respects, as a colleague of mine suggested earlier today, tonight's action could in fact be considered largely ceremonial in that it marks the beginning of the next phase in this process, but by far again does not conclude it. Where we are now, we can clearly see the end of the process and the reality of a hotel that meets our community vision. That vision has a number of components, as I will discuss later in my remarks. It includes general fund revenue that may be derived from transient occupancy tax that could support a variety of routine and special municipal activities. It includes importantly, space in a high-quality hotel for meetings, for conferences, for family events, a much-needed amenity that this community lacks in large measure. And it includes the vision of a high-quality physical amenity, as I indicated before, to complete the development of that important area of our city that we call the Crossing San Bruno. The action that's proposed tonight is specifically to authorize the initiation of negotiations with a preferred development team that has been selected and is being recommended to you tonight based on an extensive review, evaluation, and competitive proposal solicitation process that the city staff in conjunction with a subcommittee of the City Council has engaged over the last several months. I'll speak to some of the additional details in a moment. This action is only and specifically a selection of the best developer or development team for this project. It is not an approval or even a consideration of the best deal for the city. There's no deal in fact on the table tonight. We, the city, our consultants, and the development teams that participated in our solicitation and review process, none of us have enough information at this time to determine the detailed, specific financial aspects of a deal at this point in time. The developers who participated have given us their best guess and preliminary assessments of the financial considerations that will need to be reviewed, evaluated, and discussed in great detail. But again, their economics and their preliminary proposals do not represent a deal. That deal comes next and what we are proposing to you tonight is that you authorize us to begin the process of negotiations that would result in that deal. That deal would come back to you and you would have the opportunity, you will have the opportunity, assuming that we proceed, you will have the opportunity to do your own detailed evaluation, consideration of the community's interests, and to make further specific approval of that deal and the deal points. So I'm going to take a step backwards here for a moment and do a short review of the history of the site and the process that we used to reach the action that we're proposing to you tonight. In the late 1990s, the city had what I consider to be the considerable foresight to identify an opportunity when the federal government decided to surplus and auction the site that is now the Crossing San Bruno. Approximately 20-acre site was surplus and the city recognized at that time that this piece of property had the opportunity to produce a wide variety of amenities and important amenities for the future of the San Bruno community. The city prepared a specific plan to identify specifically what development was of interest to the community, how that development should be planned, how it should be implemented, how it should be phased. That plan envisioned a full-service hotel as one of the key amenities at the corner of El Camino Real adjacent to Highway 380. In the mid-2000s, as the development of the site had been proceeding rapidly and the hotel market conditions had continued to be stagnant in the post-9/11 environment, the city identified that it had yet another opportunity to avoid just simply sitting around waiting for the market to improve adequately that we could get to the point where we are tonight. And in expediting that vision, the city was able to identify a developer and to assist in the development of the high-quality fine dining restaurant that we all now enjoy, Jack's at the Crossing. Today's vision for a hotel was developed over the past several years. As I mentioned, in the post-9/11 environment, as the hotel market continued stagnant, the city pursued its vision by working with hotel industry experts to evaluate the best type of project that we were waiting for. What was it that would best suit that site and could best be matched to the city's vision for a hotel project? While our specific plan had previously specified a up-to-500-room hotel with a full restaurant and the other amenities of a very large full-service hotel, our subsequent analysis identified that the best product for that site in the, not exactly short term, but in the reasonable term, was what's known in the industry as a select service hotel. That is a hotel that we will be talking about in greater detail tonight, so I won't spend the time to describe exactly what that hotel, the type of amenities that it includes and what it looks like. The city, in order to set the stage and to develop the groundwork that would be necessary to work towards soliciting developer interest in that site and in that type of a project, the city next moved in July of 2012 to purchase the site, the footprint, the empty lot that had sat vacant for approximately a dozen years as the Crossing site developed. We purchased that site for $1.4 million in one-time resources and the purpose of that purchase was to assure that the city, not the previous property owner or any other entity, would have the ability to control and to manage the schedule and the selection of the developer that would ultimately build out the vision. We next moved as part of the City Council's direction to proceed in taking advantage of improving market conditions that have occurred over the past approximately 18 to 24 months, in October of 2012, to issuance of a request for proposals and qualifications to the hotel development community with the intent to solicit proposals to design, finance, and build a hotel. That hotel, as I indicated, would be of the select service type with at least, and these are the requirements that we specified in our request for proposals, at least 120 guest rooms, suite-type rooms, and importantly, at least 3,000 square feet of meeting space that would be able to, could be configured to seat at least 200 people in banquet-style arrangement. Again, this was, this being a key part of the vision that the city has long held. As a select service product, this type of hotel might or might not include either onsite or offsite visitor services, including fitness or spa facilities, and it was specifically our intent that with Jack's Restaurant next door, the nearby restaurant would provide the opportunity of a full-service amenity, although not incorporated directly in a full-service type hotel product. The developer proposals process requested very specific information from the development community and our RFP, RFQ was circulated to over two dozen potentially qualified development teams in and around this market area. On the slide, the number of specific components that we requested be provided included the team's qualifications and experiences, the experience in developing similar types of hotels, financial capacity, the project concept that was of most interest to the development team, and any considerations that they might have regarding entry into an exclusive negotiations with the city of San Bruno. The city was extremely pleased and our hotel industry experts suggested to us that we did in fact receive a very strong response to our request for proposals. We received a total of five proposals and we know that there were a number of companies that looked at this particular opportunity and who had some conversations with us. But in general, the five proposals that we received all demonstrated some level of important strength. They all attracted our specific attention and all of them received a very extensive review. Again, these were all companies who had significant, who have significant hotel development, many of them also hotel operations experience. And again, while there were significant similarities among the various proposals that we received from the five companies, there were also some compelling differences. And that was the basis of our evaluation, was a careful review of the details of each of those proposals. We looked very, very carefully and in fact, we went two rounds with the development teams and are actually about 30 days, maybe a little bit longer, behind the schedule that we had originally planned to get back to you with the recommendations to enter, with the recommendation to enter exclusive negotiations because we wanted to make sure that we were actually comparing apples to apples for like products and like information to like information and that we didn't have significant disparities in the amount or the type of information that we had received. We did, so we did a second round with each of the proposers, asked for some more detailed information, completed a thorough review of all five proposals using a variety of criteria. There was no single one compelling feature. We did not seek a variety of information and then only look at one aspect, financial considerations for example. We used a broad-based evaluation of criteria to determine which in fact would be the best available development team because we are expecting that this will be an important relationship between the city and the development team in realizing and fulfilling the community's long-held vision. We looked at the developer experience and their capacity to do another project now, quickly, to take advantage of the improved market conditions and environment. We looked at their recent similar projects. We looked at the proposed hotel product and amenities. We looked at the compliance with the high-quality environment and the specific expectations of the specific plan and as I indicated, we looked at the financial assumptions and the developer's financial capability. That process included, as I indicated, a broad-based solicitation, a careful evaluation of the proposals. And it also included in the last phase, interviews with two of what the paper screening, if you will, identified as the most highly qualified of the five teams. We interviewed two teams, OTO Development and RD Olsen Development. And I think it was, I can speak for the entire panel that conducted the interviews, that consisted both of our outside hotel and economic experts, city staff, as well as the two council members who comprise our subcommittee. I think it's, I think I can speak for the entire group of us who participated in that process to say that we had two very, very good choices. We had two highly qualified teams who strongly demonstrated their interest in working with the city of San Bruno and joining in partnership with us. At the end of that careful and thorough evaluation, we did select and are recommending to you tonight that we enter into exclusive negotiations with OTO Development. Both of these developers proposed very similar projects, but if, as you will see in the next couple of slides, OTO and RD Olsen, and this is characteristic of what the variety of the five proposals we received looked like. You can see on the two slides, if you go to the next one, and then after a moment, the next one, you can see that the two development teams responding to the same proposal, a request for proposal, and having a similar concept still had some variation between the two of them in identifying what their specific proposal would be and how the project would be financed and configured. Those details are shown on the slide. The considerations that the interview team in our careful and thorough evaluation considered and that we believe provide a recommendation, provide the basis for recommending OTO Development are the following, and there are five specific ones that it came to mind as I was thinking about exactly what was it that specifically differentiated the two, the two companies. The hotel, the style and the intent with regard to the hotel operations, OTO intends to provide and contract for operations of the hotel in a manner that is similar to the way that they've done it with a number of their other products and has, that they have successfully utilized with a number of other of their projects. OTO, as you saw on the previous slide, met the city's requirements for the important conference meeting and event space that is a highly-desired characteristic of the project that we are seeking. And I failed to mention earlier that the conference space or the meeting event space is not a typical amenity that is included in the select service product. So this was a kind of a unique feature that each of the proposers had to really think about. How do we provide that? How do we finance that? Because it's not, it doesn't come with a cookie-cutter model of a select service type of hotel product. OTO, as I mentioned, provided a clear and thoughtful response to the community's vision for that space and identified, and I'm sure that they will explain to you tonight, how they envision that space as well. We looked at the breadth and the scope of the hotel development and operational experience. Again, OTO can speak to that more capable than I can. The financial capability of the company, again, a very broad, very deep, and very diverse financial portfolio. And we looked at the, whether the city could reasonably expect that by entering into a as tight as possible exclusive negotiating period, whether we would reasonably expect at this point that we would be back to you within 90, maybe, maybe as much as 120 days with an actual development agreement that meets the needs and the interests of the city of San Bruno and that we don't expect that there will be a substantial delay, that while it's always possible that those negotiations could not reach fruition. We have a high level of confidence at this point where we're recommending the establishment of the negotiations, that in fact, we will incur minimum risk in moving this project forward in a timely manner. Specifically to the negotiating rights agreement, which is the subject and the only subject of your action tonight, the next steps in the process, if you will, include three specific components. So the exclusive negotiating period would, with your direction tonight, commence as soon as we can make sure that we've covered all of the details about what's going to be negotiated, how the negotiations will occur, and what the schedule for that will be. In general terms, the negotiating rights agreement envisions three phases. That includes the initial period where we would take, hopefully not more than a few weeks or a couple of weeks, to negotiate and execute an exclusive negotiating rights agreement. Once that is done and we have identified that we are negotiating exclusively with one development team and that we're solely focused on the opportunity to reach a deal to bring back to you, the project due diligence period would commence. And during that time, both the city as well as the development team will really get down into the details of the design development, the financial aspects of the project, and all and any other necessary details that go into the creation of a development agreement. There's a great deal of work that needs to be done here and the development team will incur a significant expense. Now that expense has been estimated to me at, into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And this is one of the main reasons why we and why cities in our situation typically use this process in order to give the developer, I've mentioned the type of certainty we're looking for, it's also, negotiations is always a two-way street or two parties involved at least. The development team, in order to take the risk, if you will, of expending funds, doing the due diligence, creating the details, and engaging with us in extended negotiations, needs to have a relative level of confidence that we're not out talking to others or soliciting other proposals while we're simultaneously negotiating. And then lastly, as the third phase of the exclusive negotiating period, the city and the development team will get down to detailed level negotiations that, as I mentioned, is expected to result in the creation of a mutually agreeable development and disposition agreement. That agreement will come back to you at a later time. Again, we anticipate that would be in the summer of this year. And that development agreement will include all of the necessary deal points. In summary, the negotiating agreement establishes a timeframe for negotiations and it provides for the allocation of the resources, both that the city as well as the development team will need to expend in order to bring you back a sound, solid, and suitable deal. The development agreement itself, as I indicated, secures not only the details of the projects that is proposed, but it also expresses the terms and conditions of the city's, any city financial assistance and of the project entitlements that will be necessary in order to allow the project to move forward. So at the, at the risk of being somewhat redundant, the next steps include the due diligence period, the negotiation of the agreement, at which time we will be able to tell you and ask for your consideration of any financial participation that may be envisioned for this project. Again, that's not tonight. City Council review and approval of that agreement. And then finally, and lastly, and with a great deal of what I hope will be pride, we hope to see an approximate 18-month period of construction and the eventual and final realization of this community's long-held and highly anticipated vision. So with that, I would ask your permission to allow Jason Moody to speak for a moment and then once our presentations are finished, we'd be happy to answer questions unless you'd like to ask questions now.
Thank you, Connie. Once again, my name is Jason Moody. I'm with a firm called Economic and Planning Systems and we were retained by the city to review all the proposals that were submitted, focusing primarily on the financial aspects of the proposal. And in that area, we really focused on two areas, primarily the financial capacity of the developer to execute according to their proposal. And then- And then, we also looked at the, their requested subsidy. We gave less importance to that component because that was just a concept, really. It's not, it's not a commitment from them, it's not a commitment from us, it's just their kind of general sense of the, the kind of how much they would need, if anything, to do the project. So we put most of the attention on that portion of the evaluation, on the financial resources and capacity of the developers. All of the proposals, all four that were submitted, submitted information in this regard, and the two finalists clearly were, had the most resources at their disposal. They've had more project experience and to demonstrate that they could do this. Between the two, the two finalists, we gave a slight nod to OTO on this, primarily because they have a larger portfolio of projects. They have committed equity to projects of this nature. They identified their equity, they provided more financial information about their available equity, and they have, they have a much bigger portfolio. Again, R.D. Olson, also, we believe, would could successfully implement a project like this, but they had a few things on that component that were less desirable, primarily that, well, primarily they didn't identify their equity partners, and their primary equity would be provided by Mr. Olson himself, so he'd be fully guaranteeing the loan, which would be a full recourse loan. And if you have more questions about that, I'd be happy to answer. But essentially, what that meant was that if, for any reason, and we didn't think this would be the case, but all of the other projects that he has kind of went south, or there's a lawsuit or something, or there was some financial issues, there's a potential that that could affect his ability to implement this project. So that was, that was of some concern. But again, we felt both developers were, were very strong in this regard. We also looked at their commitment for their stated project financials, if you will, how much they thought they would cost to build the project, what the room rates would be, and how much they might need from the city. Again, we consider that with less importance because, and I've been doing this for my whole career, and I have never participated in a project in which the submitted terms that they do prior to an actual E&amp;A is the actual terms that they end up committing to. In most cases, they are really neither, they're not really prepared to make a commitment because they haven't done the due diligence they need to really tell you how much they'll need and how much they're not. So it usually gives you a kind of, it's really kind of window dressing. We like to know if they think they're going to need a subsidy or not, but beyond that, we don't put too much, too much emphasis on the actual differences because the very purpose of an E&amp;A is to work that out. That's, that's why we have an E&amp;A process, is to, to make sure that is clear. So that was the basis of our financial analysis. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Good. Any questions of staff at this time?
We would like to offer you the opportunity to hear directly from OTO, and you might have some questions of them, and you might have some additional questions of us after.
Great. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Connie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Todd Turner. I'm a founding partner of OTO Development based in Spartanburg, South Carolina. I'm here with two colleagues, Steve Peters, who's the head of real estate for this region, and Mike Gallin, who's the director of development for the West Coast. We're happy to be here, and we appreciate the confidence that your subcommittee has exhibited toward us among a pool of very qualified applicants. Over the last nine months, we've been building a relationship with your planners and city executives regarding this project and our interest in bringing a hotel to this site. We're delighted to get a call from Connie two weekends ago saying that we were the ones who were selected to proceed out of the interview process. We look forward to working with you on this. Not met each of you individually, so if, if you'd like, I'm going to spend some time talking about our company and our project and our proposal on this site. First, a little bit about OTO Development. We're a South Carolina-based hotel development and operating company with national exposure, local experience, and a long track record of success. OTO was formed in 2004. Since then, we've developed 49 hotels that are Marriott, Hilton, Hyatt, select service, upscale branded hotels, including 16 in California. Today, we own and operate 37 hotels in 10 states. We're under construction on four hotels, two are in Midtown Manhattan and two are in downtown DC. And we're less, we're 30 days away from starting construction on a new hotel in Palo Alto we've been working on for a couple of years. So that's local experience, very present. We're working on entitlements on five sites in California, three of which are in the Bay Area, including Palo Alto. So, Karen, we can go to the next one. The projects that we work on are in markets that are difficult, developments typically involving complex projects, mixed-use, subterranean parking, very high-quality finish, and high-quality brands. All right, Karen. We think sponsorship is important, and we think track record is important. OTO was formed from the same investors and managers who created Blockbuster Video and Extended Stay America. Upon selling Extended Stay America, we kept the same management and financial partners and formed OTO Development the next day. This map shows you just graphically our experience. We've built 526 hotels across the US, that's more than anybody in the industry. And we are actively seeking projects like this in high-performing, high-barrier markets where we can deliver a great product and a great community. Going to give you a couple of examples of things we're working on. This is the Hilton Garden in Palo Alto, California, that we're going to start construction on next month. We can scroll through a couple of these. This, this is our hotel at Madison Square Garden, Penn Station in Midtown Manhattan, is going to open in April. So if y'all are looking for a place to stay next time you go to a Knicks game, there it is. This project is under construction in downtown DC in the West End. It's a Hilton Garden. Right now, it's a hole in the ground, and we're starting to come up with our foundations. This won't take another 18 months. This is a project that's been open since April of 11. Another hotel in downtown DC is part of a billion-dollar mixed-use project that had three levels of underground parking, 900,000 square feet of high-end Class A office, a grocery store, extremely complicated work demonstrating our ability to work in an environment that's, is difficult. This is a recent project we're working on in San Diego, Mission Valley, a new Spring Hill Suites. This is, gives you an idea of, of the design we're doing down there for the brand-new Spring Hill Suites. So we're recognized among the brands as premier franchise partner. Marriott, Hilton, and Hyatt, that's where we do all our work. We've received numerous awards and knowledge in our development and operational achievements. We've won multiple developer of the year awards, and recently, we received Marriott's highest honor, which is the Partnership Circle Award that goes to very few individuals. Also, we've built more Spring Hill Suites than anyone in the country. We operate our own hotels and are recognized by the brands for excellence in that field, too. Our CEO, Corey Oaks, is the president of the Spring Hill Suites Franchise Advisory Council within the Marriott Corporation. So I'll tell you a little bit about our hotel proposal. As Connie mentioned, we initially proposed 131-room, five-story Spring Hill Suites. Spring Hill is Marriott's upscale lifestyle brand that addresses the demands of both the business and the leisure traveler. It's, it's their entry into this lifestyle segment with design and amenities that are going to cater perfectly to this market where you have corporate people during the week and a strong leisure component on the weekends. We think it's the perfect fit, and we hope you do, too. Our project is going to have a combination of at-grade and below-grade parking, still to be worked out on, on fully engineering, but it might be one or two levels below-grade on the parking. We're going to have 3,000 square feet of contiguous conference facility space. We're going to have amenities that you see listed up here. We're going to have a swimming pool and a, and a hot tub, a, you know, free hot breakfast. And the thing about Spring Hill Suites, there is a separate sort of living room in each suite where you can sit, and there's a microwave and a fridge and a wet bar there. So I think it's going to be great for that, that medium-to-long-term stay guest here in this area. This is the site plan that we initially have proposed, shows the layout and, you know, demonstrates how tight the site is. Typically, when we're developing a Spring Hill Suites, we would look for a two-and-a-half acre site that we could lay out all the parking on the surface around the hotel. It's just the most efficient way to do it. We know there are site constraints here, but we, we've worked on a project where this, this is going to work functionally, and, you know, Jason talked about the expense of doing this, and Connie talked about this, but it's going to be a great project when we're done. And we've got a long way to go, and this is all very preliminary. We know that the development process is collaborative. Everywhere we build a hotel, it starts with our coming in with an idea to the folks at the city, the architectural review board, the city planners. And just want to give you some, an example of collaboration in action. This is a rendering of our early designs for two hotels we're proposing in Santa Monica, California. A courtyard on the left and a Hampton Inn Suites on the right. This is what we came in with, a beautiful hotel. We loved the way it looked. But through a very long iterative process that's still in the works, much to Mike Gallin's chagrin, the, the next slide shows you where we are today on design, that, and how it has evolved through a lot of input from various people. I like the first one better myself, but this is what we're doing. So that's, I appreciate your time, and thank you for listening. I'd be glad to answer any questions that, that you have about me or our project or our proposal.
Well, Mr. Iber and I have the privilege of meeting you a number of times and pretty extensively, but I want to see if the rest of the council has any questions for the developer. Michael?
Thank you. So we were told that the estimate of the city's contribution was that, it was just an estimate at this point, based on whatever information you have. But being that you've developed over 500 of these properties and probably had to go through this process several times, I imagine you're probably pretty good at making those estimates. And I'm just wondering, what's your track record so far? How close have you come in on the other estimates, and can we expect to be pretty close to what you've proposed?
I think, in this case, we, what we were asked to present as far as our application was our best guess on what we knew today, which is not much. As Connie mentioned, that once you get into the, the due diligence process and start spending tens of thousands of dollars to really understand the engineering, the soils, conditions, what type of structure you're going to have under the building, you, you don't know a lot. We will know more in, in 60 days, we're going to know a lot more in 120 days. But it is an estimate based upon our experience, you know, locally with Palo Alto. We just got bids back on that hotel, so we know what it costs us to build that on a per-square-foot basis. We know what it costs to build a subterranean parking stall, per stall, because we did two levels underground in Palo Alto also. So we have very local, very current data. On this one, it's an estimate, yes, but we're being conservative also. We took the approach of being conservative and putting probably more upfront today, hoping that we, as we learn in the months to come, that we can bring our, our development costs down, therefore bring the amount of participation from the city down with it. We wanted to do it that way rather than to come to you with a low-proposed participation and then come back six months from now and say, we need another million dollars. That's the way we chose to do it. And we committed in our subcommittee meeting that we will be open with what we find as we go from here forward about our changes in, in the market, both the performance of the hotels in the market, which is a big driver of, of the math, and also changes in the cost to develop this hotel the way we all want it to look.
And in your experience, what, what in general is a key driver of that figure? What would you encounter when you start digging in a little deeper that would generally trigger a big variance in that estimate?
It's most likely going to be the per-square-foot construction cost of, of the building and the, the per-stall cost of the subterranean parking. We understand that part of our proposal, and we're prepared to do this, is the, is prevailing wage of the construction project itself, which is an inflator over what our prices were in Palo Alto. So we applied roughly a 35% to 40% premium over our development costs down there to come up with our estimate for this project. And we think that's high, we hope that's high. But I think that's going to be where we're going to see the biggest reduction. That's on our, that's on the denominator of the equation. The numerator of the equation is how well the market performs this year and how, how the forecasters see the next four or five years in the market performing, which is going to give us the numerator, which is how we're going to perform on our bottom-line revenue at this hotel. So that, that's the math. It's how much money you make over how much it costs to build it. And as those change, we've got a threshold that we want to achieve that's commensurate with the risk of development as far as the return on our investment. And it's, it's just a formula. We've got a complex pro forma that we put together that factors in a whole lot of things. And it's, it's going to change a lot between now and a year from now, but we hope in the positive direction for all of us.
Okay. Thank you.
You, Chair?
Rico.
To go on some of the same comments from Councilmember Salazar. So one of his questions were, out of all the projects that you've done, how on target have you been with your projections?
Okay.
And I heard a lot of detail, a lot of information, but I don't know if I really heard
Okay.
a specific answer to that question.
Okay. Mike, in Palo Alto, where, how do we come in on our final numbers versus our estimates from a year ago? And Mike is our director of development for the West Coast.
Good evening. I would say, you know, historically, I think we've done a good job budgeting all of our projects. I think we typically come in, you know, at or under budget on the vast majority of everything I can recall. On Palo Alto, I think because of the cycle that we're in right now, we did see a little bit of a spike in the Bay Area. I think the Bay Area is accelerating much more. I think there's much more competition for labor in the market right now. So we actually were slightly over on our construction budget where the final number came in versus what we had budgeted, but it was well within our contingency, and I think we, you know, made it work. So I think we have a great track record of hitting budget.
And with our experience in developing in the regions where we're building Southern California, Northern California, the Northeast, we've got relationships with enough general contractors who have built these hotels for us, who can give us price checks along the way to where we keep our pencil sharp, and we don't like surprises. Our investors do not like those, those over-budget surprises. But we, we've become very good over the years in estimating this, you know, initially in that number following through to the end.
And then, one thing that anyone, I mean, I wasn't on the subcommittee, and again, I'm not in your profession, but residents or folks might say, well, why do we need to give them concessions at all? There's a number that's here, which I've heard from you and the report from staff, is that, that's not to say that's what it is going to be. This is a understanding of entering into an agreement, which then that is discussed and evaluated, as you said, with some of the criteria over a period of time. So, hey, to the residents of San Bruno, why are concessions needed? How are they derived for when you are putting in this proposal? Because obviously, we don't all do this for a living, so it would help to enlighten us.
Okay, sure. I talked about a couple of factors that are in, in the equation. One of them is how the hotel market performs and how we think this hotel's going to perform. We do that research. There's a company called Smith Travel Research out of Nashville, who collects hotel performance data on all the hotels in the country pretty much every day. So we use that data from Smith Travel to see how is the market doing? That's the most important fundamental driver of how you're going to do in this market. We studied, I think it was nine hotels in San Bruno and up in Oyster Point, looked at their performance history going back to the year 2000, and put together some trends and analysis of how this market has performed historically, as is compared to San Francisco, as is compared to the Peninsula, and as is compared to the US, and have a very good sense of how this market is doing today. At, at the end of 2012, that comp set of hotels was 82% occupied at $141 in average daily rate. Average daily rate is called ADR, that's in, in the business. So you've got a, a stretch of hotels there. I think nine hotels that, that average $141 and rated 82%, very strong performance. We look at this performance of comp set hotels and say, if we were open and stabilized today, being a new hotel, when the newest hotel that we're competing against is 12 years old, being a new hotel in this very good location, how would we stack up in that, in that spread, in that spectrum of, of competitors? So average is 141, the range is probably 160-some dollars to 120-some dollars. We, we estimated that today, if we were open and stabilized with our Spring Hill Suites, we'd be running about 80% and 150, $53 essentially. From that, we look at forecasting the future, which is tough to do, but we rely on a lot of experts like PKF, who provides this study called Hotel Horizons, that looks at this MSA and many others in the country, and says, over the next five years, what do they see the changes coming in the region for changes in occupancy and average daily rate? Their estimate is that from year in 2012 to year in 2016, average daily rate's going to go up 58% in this region. They include San Francisco down to San Mateo. Heavily weighted by San Francisco, but we, we look at those factors, all the, all the indicators are very positive. are very positive that this market is going to continue to rise as the tide rises in this region. So our hotel, we start at $153, is going to rise with the market. So that's how we determine where we're going to be performing when this thing stabilizes in 2017. So that, we also, having operated so many hotels, we know the kind of net operating income percentages that flow to the bottom line, which is our profitability. So from that, we, okay, we've pegged the top line, how we're going to do with our pro forma. We know we've got a hurdle investment return we're trying to hit on all the projects we do around the country. For something to be enticing for our investors and for us to want to recommend to our investors that they proceed with the risk of doing these type of projects, they have to hit this hurdle return to compare with other things we're looking at around the country. So the hurdle, the denominator is how much does it cost to build? In this case, the requirement for being underground parking, the requirement for prevailing wage construction are very expensive things to do, as opposed to doing a surface parking lot. And if I may make a comparison to Palo Alto, so today, this market is running $141 in rate, the Palo Alto market is running $191 in rate. So the impact of that additional $50 in rate every night by every room is enormous in your ability to absorb additional development cost. So, were this market running at $191 as opposed to $141, we would not be asking for any subsidy. Short answer, I know you probably wanted that earlier instead of later, but the short answer is, in order to be an attractive return, the development cost has to be at a certain level and can't be above a certain level. And based upon our initial estimates, we did the math and if the certain level is here and without subsidy, it was going to cost us this much, we need, we put a subsidy in there that equalized, it got us to that threshold that we couldn't exceed and still have an interesting investment to our investors. Did somewhere in there answer your question?
I think at the end you summed it up.
Okay.
That's into my questions for now.
I read, anything?
No.
Sorry. But thank you for the, thank you for the understanding and the detail, in all sincerity. Thank you.
Yes, I, I appreciate all the work that has gone, has been done by both you and the RD Olson Development. I can see why the subcommittee and the staff had difficulty choosing between you, but your experience is overwhelming. Have you ever had a time where you totally failed and what lessons you came back with that?
2009 was the worst year in lodging since 1936.
Really?
Unprecedented declines in RevPAR, just indicating the risk involved with development. No one saw that coming, probably people should have seen it, but we didn't, no one did. We had to let a few projects go because they were in a stage where we had to decide to commit hundreds of thousands of more dollars to proceed with the project without any vision of any financing being available for who knows how long. I mean, it was, you know, the financial markets were in ruin and who was going to support a new development of anything. So we let a few projects go that we wish we hadn't let go. We've learned a lot from that and today we wish we had found a way to hold on to those, closed on the deals, and we would now be open with these, a couple of great hotels in certain markets that we'd be proud to own, would be performing very well. We know things are cyclical and they're always going to be cyclical. That one was just particularly shocking and caused us to probably fail a couple of times when we made some, looking back on it rash decisions that probably were, they were prudent at the time, but looking back, we wish we had taken a different course. We also did, you probably have heard enough failure stories, but we bought an old building in downtown Baltimore, 100-year-old building, and one of the few that survived a big fire down there with the idea of converting it into a Spring Hill Suites. And as we got into the diligence of really understanding the structure there, it ended up being way over budget. And that's one of our develop, that's probably the only existing development thing that I would say is a failure because we were so far over budget because of what we weren't able to discover upfront because of the ownership of the building. It wouldn't let us in adequately, but that's, other than that, I think our investors have been very happy with what we've done.
Okay, thank you.
Question for Jason. You know, people have talked and speculated that, oh, the city's subsidizing this whole thing. There's a return, I mean, on this investment. Maybe you could explain a little bit about that.
Yeah, I think that- Yeah, I think that if you really look at the vitality, this is a moneymaker for the city, not a money loser. The city will make money on transient occupancy tax, that's the primary source of revenue, and property tax. So those things, we calculate preliminary based on a 10-year period and that's about a 6 million return to the city. That's assuming the subsidy that they're requesting. If you take away their subsidy, that would be about eight or nine million. So this is, in the end, going to make money for the city. So you certainly want to have that big picture when considering a project. The most important thing is to make sure you can execute the project and make sure you pick a developer who's capable, you're confident of doing that, because that will allow you to get the actual money that's going to be a major boon to the general fund of the city, much, it'll dwarf the subsidy basically, in the long run.
Thank you. Ken?
Gentlemen, as a member of the subcommittee, I was just tickled to be in that meeting, to be in that room and to listen and to, one, first, be able to review five very good proposals and then narrow it down to two. Very experienced and, you know, in between, it was very difficult to make the decision. But one of the things that really struck me and I felt very good about was when I asked the question, "From an experience, from your experience, and you have a lot of experience, what attracted you to San Bruno? What is it about this site that an OTO would come and put in all this time and effort to, you know, to put a product here?"
It's a great question. It's, it, San Bruno and this site have the characteristics that we're looking for in every project we do and they're, it sounds simple, but it's hard to find. High level of sustained performance, meaning high occupancy and a strong average daily rate, that even through the downturn, this market only went down to 75% occupancy, when the whole country went down to 52% occupancy. So that in itself shows the resiliency of this market. The rate dropped a good bit, but occupancy stayed high. So that's a big quality we're looking for and we find markets like this through studying data and through Steve's knowledge of the market from the ground. It's that, it's high barriers to entry. That means it is difficult to get something built in this area. The last hotel that opened in this submarket opened in 2001, I believe, or maybe it was the year 2000, but I think 12 years is the newest hotel in the area, which again is the best indicator of how hard it is to do something. We love the Peninsula, the Bay Area, but particularly the Peninsula. In the space from SFO down to San Jose, there have only been, I think, two branded hotels to open since 2005. So this entire region has that characteristic about it. This market, we like it. It's very close to some major demand generators, both corporate ones, right across 380. The airport is a massive driver, over 40 million people in and out of that every year, and we're one of the closest submarkets and easiest to get to downtown San Francisco, where people have an easy, easy time selecting a brand-new Marriott branded hotel that will be a significant discount to downtown. We hope not a huge discount because bigger rates are better than smaller rates, but it is a great alternative for folks visiting the city for leisure.
All right. Any other questions of staff or the developer? I see we have a crowd in the room and I don't think you all came to just listen. Did anybody else want to address the council? Please tell us your name and your affiliation. Thank you.
My name is Corey Kreth and I'm a principal with Axis Architecture and I'm here tonight to represent the apparent second-place development team with, I'm here on behalf of my client, RD Olson. And first of all, if the vote had been taken, I would be here congratulating the outstanding effort by the team from OTO. I haven't even had the pleasure of meeting you yet, but they're pros, that's obvious. But my client, who was thoroughly vetted through this whole process as well, is also a thorough pro. And he asked me to come tonight to just share a few thoughts and maybe ask you to consider a different outcome, since the vote hasn't been taken yet. It was stated earlier that there is no deal done at this time, that at this point, the developers have only put together their best guess on what this deal might look like. But let me just point out a few of the differences. Our proposal included 149 guest rooms, which is a significant increase to what the recommended team is proposing. That will, down the road, translate to significant enhancement in the TOT tax revenue that would flow to the city. Really, in all other aspects, I think it's been said tonight that it was a very difficult decision, that it was very close, that both teams were experienced, could deliver on the city's vision. There was talk about the quality of the asset that will be produced. I think that that shined in the interview. It was a pleasure to be a part of that process myself, speaking personally. And I think you all came away with a good idea of what RD Olson's capabilities are. The meeting space, we made a commitment to provide the ballroom that would equal the 200-seat capacity for banquet-style events. So really, across the board, when you check the boxes, we were right there. And it came as a huge disappointment to learn that we weren't staff's recommended team. But what I would offer you is this simple fact, even though the deal hasn't been negotiated yet and there's terms that will need to be worked out, I submit to you that you're starting as a city in a $2.5 million hole in this negotiation, because my client was only asking a contribution of the land, the $1.4 million. And it's been portrayed to us that OTO's request is $3.9 million. $2.5 million is a lot to give away at the beginning of a negotiation. And so if all else is equal, or if all else is really close to being equal, because RD Olson has a terrific track record, I would just simply ask you, why give away $2.5 million of the city's money? Appreciate your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Next, please. Yes, pull that right down. Tell us your name and your affiliation, please.
My name is Maria Rhodes and I lived in San Bruno for 25 years. I'm a member of Local Two, because I worked for AT&amp;T Park in Candlestick for 24 years. My life story is the importance of having a union. During the baseball season, I have health insurance, but in the off-season, I work cleaning house out of the union. And I can't afford to pay health insurance. I pay $150 for my medication and I can't afford to go to the doctor. So it's why it's very important for the community of San Bruno to have the hotel workers to get union benefits like health insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Graciela Calhoun. I have lived-
Could you raise it? There you go. Thank you.
In San Bruno for 14 years. Worked at the Rayson Fisherman's Wharf, San Francisco for seven years. And I have been a member of Local Two for nine years. The union gives us security in our jobs, protection for the employees, and good family and medical benefits. This is why I feel that the new hotel opening here in San Bruno needs to be staffed by union members. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laszlo Pohotsky. I lived in San Bruno for six years. I am a Local Two member in San Francisco at the Rayson Fisherman's Wharf Hotel. I'm a houseperson. Having a union is incredibly important for the hotel workers. Without the union, workers have no rights, no respect on the job. Non-union jobs in hotels is terrible. The workers were not treated well. I've been working for a non-union hotel in Palo Alto, in a Crown Plaza, the Hyatt Stamford Park Hotel, and they had no union. So anyway, with no union, workers do not have healthcare or pensions or paid time of, for example, PTO personal time off. Because we have the union, workers at my hotel are treated with respect. We are able to raise our families with health coverage, healthcare insurance. I hope you will do everything you can so ensure that the workers at the new hotel in San Bruno will have a union and respect, so they will able to, to have healthcare, Medicare insurance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Lamoyne Worline-Hying. I work with Unite Here Local Two, the Hotel Food Service and Gaming Industry Union. The other hat I wear is as president of the San Mateo County Labor Council, where I've had occasion to meet some of you through that work and that capacity. But tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of my union, Unite Here Local Two. And we just, I want to very briefly add a little bit to what our members have already spoken to in terms of their hopes and desires, that this hotel will become a union hotel. And we just want to very briefly acknowledge and applaud the fact that this will be built with union labor in the construction phase. But as a union, our concern is for the workers after, the folks who will be there when the hotel opens and staff that hotel. And the only thing that I, I guess, that I wanted to emphasize here is that it's our firm conviction that it is the union that will be the difference between whether or not these jobs have affordable health insurance that covers families, whether or not these jobs will have pensions and retirement security, whether or not these jobs will have union protection in terms of, you know, employment rights and so forth. It is our firm conviction that absent the union, there will not be an affordable health plan there that covers families, there will not be a pension plan there, there will not be retirement security, and there will not be a job security there. So we really hope that in the upcoming weeks, that we have the opportunity to work with the city and to work with OTO Development, to figure out how we can unionize this hotel and hopefully do it in a way that is expeditious, without interference, where the workers there are able to quickly make their desires known and expeditiously be able to launch the union there. So we hope specifically that OTO Development will agree to a car check neutrality agreement as a mechanism to ensure that the workers do in fact have a way to unionize without interference. And once again, just to sum up, more than anything, we really want to emphasize that, you know, it's our, it's our firm conviction, it really is the union that is going to be the difference between jobs that provide affordable health insurance and family coverage, a job that has a pension fund, an actual pension, and security in retirement, and one that has basic protections where all the workers are not just at will and subject to potential termination at any moment. So thank you very much for this time and we just wanted to make sure. Finally, another member of our union, Renee Molades, who was here, wanted to make sure that I mentioned she was here and wanted to speak on behalf of unionizing this project, but she had to leave. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other questions of staff or?
Just one more.
Oh, one more?
Good evening, my name is Maya Singh.
Step right up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Maya Singh. I live in San Bruno 36 years and I work union in the Hyatt for 20 years and it is very good. We have a union, we have a benefit, everything. I work part-time, other hotels, nothing. We don't have nothing, they don't treat us right and we work in the Hyatt. We start, we work 20 years, we work first year, they pay the same amount and we treat equal right. equal right. And other hotels, non-union, I work also part-time. They treat like one person gets $15 an hour, and we do same work, we get $8.50 an hour. That's not fair, non-union, and no benefit, no hospital, nothing. Hyatt, we have everything. And thank you.
Thank you.
We like to have a new hotel union.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Any questions, Council, or any action? Ken?
Well, I'll start off here, and I just wanted to say that it's been a long time. And ironically, I, with two other members of this Council, sat in another hotel ballroom and watched the crossings get developed with the auction of that 20 acres. And that was, I believe, 1999, '98. And so, we've seen the development of this site, and we have patiently waited for this night and for an opportunity to have this hotel. And I am just pleased that, you know, to serve with the mayor on this Subcommittee and to be serving on this Council, to see this day here. I am very impressed with what staff has done to give us the opportunity to make this decision. I'm very impressed with the developers that have come forward. I'm proud that we've gotten that kind of reaction from the hotel industry. And so, the day has come. And I'm just as pleased, and I know it's just the beginning. I know there's still a lot that has to be done, but this is where it has to go. And I'm prepared to make a motion or adopt a resolution, what has to be made to get this process moving.
Yeah, motion to select the development team and enter into negotiations.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, I would like to just add, echo what Ken said. I've worked on this Council since '95, when we had a Navy base over there, bare piece of land, no tax revenue in this city, and now it's worth $300 million. And it's a huge step. We took a lot of chances. We had redevelopment when it was around, it really helped us. It's not around anymore, but we're bound and determined to make this happen, because in the bigger picture, this city deserves exactly what they voted for and exactly what they want. So, we'll do everything we possibly can to make it happen for all of our citizens. So, having said that, on the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie.